Kids are urging to help save orangutans.
Yana, I'm at the L.A. Zoo where a special presentation was held on orangutans. Now, while we're fortunate enough to experience them here at the zoo, well, they do face extinction, and they had some important messages here for the public.
One of the key points I always try to make is even though they're so much stronger than us, and the mouths of canines such as like tigers, yeah, and we have killed maybe a million of them over the last few centuries, they've slowly wiping species to extinction. And not one time in recorded history, not any zoo or any sanctuary in the wild has orangutan ever killed a human being. Yeah, they are far more noble creatures than we are.
Leif Cox, an orangutan conservationist and founder of the Orangutan Project, has spent the last three decades working to save orangutans from extinction. He shared his experiences and emphasized how important it is for humans to care about these animals.
We can't save orangutans unless people care and understand that the persons who share our planet, intelligent as a five, six-year-old child, have been driven to extinction for no good reason. And connecting with people with their stories and having compassion for them is part of the solution to saving them.
Cox says the next few years are pivotal in turning this around to help save viable ecosystems which will help orangutans survive into the future. There are primarily two species of orangutans, the Bornean and Sumatran. Orangutans are among the most intelligent primates. The L.A. Zoo is home to seven orangutans from the Bornean species.
People, I think, realize that primates are smart, but I don't know if they've realized to the extent to which orangutans can really problem solve and how cognitively advanced they are. And then another thing is just how, how long-lived they are. And it's one of the problems facing them conservation-wise is that they're a really long-lived species, and they don't breed very often. So females only have babies every seven to nine years.
Sadly, both species are considered to be critically endangered at this time.
Their forest home has been destroyed for unsustainable forms of agriculture such as palm oil, pulp paper, and rubber, which do not benefit the economy or the long-term future of our planet.
It's the reason why getting the message out there has become a priority, and places such as the L.A. Zoo are pivotal.
The conservation threats that are, that are behind many of these issues that are facing these species, zoos work really hard to not only support some of these initiatives, but also to educate the public on, on some of the problems that these animals are facing.
As we continue to learn from each other, hopes are to conserve a future where people live in harmony with nature. From the L.A. Zoo, I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
City leaders celebrate the official grand opening of a new resource center. A free citizenship workshop offers help and advice for those seeking legal permanent status. And the L.A. Zoo welcomes an adorable new addition to the family. All these stories in City Beat. Councilmember Kern Price and county supervisor Mark Ridley-Thomas were on hand for the official grand opening of the Hoppix Family Solution Center in South L.A. The center brings together more than 10 nonprofit and government agencies and acts as a hub for a comprehensive range of services, including housing, jobs, and mental health and substance abuse treatments. Thanks to Measure H, the center has already helped thousands of families stay off the streets. The Hoppix Family Solution Center has been operating at this location since July and has helped more than 3,000 families so far.
They come in, if they have nowhere to go, we place them in housing, and then we enroll them into our housing intervention. So where we actually find a place for them to live, negotiate with landlords, negotiate rent, and actually pay rent or portions of room for up to 12 months, and then help them stay in housing.
Councilman Kern Price, in partnership with Resource Center Cat Asen, also hosted a free citizenship and temporary protective status workshop at Manuel Arts High School. During the workshops, individuals obtained one-on-one advice on how to protect themselves and possibly gain legal permanent status. Temporary protected status is granted to countries facing devastating environmental disasters, civil war, or political instability. The humanitarian program protects individuals from deportation and allows them to live and work legally in the U.S. Councilmember Price has been a strong advocate and supporter of all immigrant rights.
Every time I hear him speak, he talks about such a strong community and that how separating people from the family really does affect the community as a whole. So we really appreciate his efforts and all of the support that he lends to the immigration community.
Another TPS workshop is being held on February 24th at the El Santo Nino Community Center at 601 East 23rd Street from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. To make an appointment, call The Los Angeles Zoo announced the birth of its first-ever female Okapi calf born at the zoo, a unique species often nicknamed the Forest Giraffe. The calf was born on November 10th, 2017, and is the second offspring for 14-year-old mother Opie and the first for three-year-old father Jackson. The couple was paired together as part of an association of zoos and aquarium species survival plan program with the goal of increasing the Okapi population, which is rapidly declining in the wild. The currently unnamed calf spent the first couple of months behind the scenes bonding with her mother and familiarizing herself with her new home and the animal care staff. But guests can now view the female calf and her mother out in their habitat daily. Well, there's nothing like combining art and travel, and it's a perfect blend at Union Station. Rasha Goel has more.
With the vast array of diversity and cultural groups in the city, it's no surprise to be experiencing some tradition at Union Station. After all, why not enjoy some culture as you navigate through the City of Angels? And for these performers, who are from a village in Belize called Huana Aragua, they say it's a way to keep their culture alive for those who are unable to go back home during the holiday season.
Besides being spiritual, it's a war dance. And that's one of the reasons you see the mask, you see the sword. If you look at the black, today we wear in black and white because it's the way we show that we mourn the past year, welcome in the new year.
This is just one of the many events Metro Art has put on. Through the program, they present music, dance, poetry readings, and film screenings at Union Station.
Metro Art has been adding artistic and cultural events to Union Station for going on five years now, and it's part of a larger effort to make Union Station a cultural destination.
It's very important to transfer cultural practices and traditions to the next generation because if I don't do it, I always tell myself, wait, who's gonna do it?
And it's a way to promote the visual arts while promoting ridership and connecting people throughout the city. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
For a list of other Metro Arts events, visit metro.net. While check out a collection of some of the biggest failures by some of the world's best-known companies, it's time for a tea party with the fairies, and Porsche fans, a new exhibit rolls into town that you won't want to miss. All this and this week's things to do. The Museum of Failure will treat its visitors to a shrine of history's epic fails by some of the world's best-known companies. First displayed in Sweden, the collection of 100-plus failures was originally conceived by psychologist and innovation researcher Dr. Samuel West as part of his research on corporate success and innovation. The marketing catastrophe that was big for her, yep. The two-wheeled self-balancing transport innovation Segway, you better believe it. These, along with artifacts spanning from the 17th century right up to the present day, including the frozen beef lasagna by Colgate, demonstrate the types of failures the museum will showcase. Other highlights include the hula chair, the Apple Newton, and even President Donald Trump's version of Monopoly from 1989 made the cut. You won't want to miss the Museum of Failure on February 4th, located at A&amp;D Architecture and Design Museum at 900 East Fourth Street. A fairy tea party, such a lovely event. Each table will be hosted by one of A Fairy Hunt's charming fairies. English tea sandwiches, shortbread cookies, fairy fruit and veggies, and fairy tea will be served, catered by a fairy caterer. Come dressed in your fairy, prince, or princess finest attire. Circle time, story time with the fairies, music, dancing, and surprises are all part of the fun. A Fairy Hunt's Fairy Tea Party takes place February 3rd from 11:30 a.m. to 12:45 p.m. at the Tarzana Community and Cultural Center, located at 19130 Ventura Boulevard. For more, visit afairyhunt.com. Celebrating the worldwide impact of Porsche's legendary machines, the Peterson Automotive Museum presents the Porsche Effect. The new exhibit, organized in partnership with Porsche Cars North America and staged in the Mullen Grand Salon, will represent the most comprehensive Porsche display outside of Stuttgart. Museum guests will have a chance to see 50 of the brand's most iconic cars, both in the exhibition and in an all-new Porsche dedicated vault tour in the museum's underground treasury. The exhibit opens to the public on February 3rd at the Peterson Museum. For more, visit peterson.org. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from All of Us here at L.A. This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
Good morning, good morning. If I could have everyone, please take their seats. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to your City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Mr. Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you call the roll?
Bloominfield, Bonn, Busciano, Sadio, Engrah, Sossen, Visar, Cores, Kaurian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. Twelve members present in a quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Price moves. Martinez seconds. Next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Bonn and move. Sadio seconds. Next.
Mr. President, Department of Building and Safety recommends that Items 1J and M be received and filed in as much as the liens have been paid in full, and that Items 1A, 1B, 1D, and 1N, as in Nancy, be continued to March 2nd.
Okay, so without objection.
Very good, sir.
Let's go through the agenda.
Very good. Committee reports for Items 10 and 31 have been submitted and circulated for council's consideration. Items 1 through 5 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, sir. Cards on all items.
Okay, let's continue.
Mr. President, there's been a request to continue Items 13 and 14 to, excuse me, Item 13 to February 7, and Item 14 to February 2nd.
Okay, without objection. Continue.
Very good, sir. Items 6 through 31 are items which public hearings have been held. For Item 7, the tabulated value of the opposing ballots cast does not exceed the tabulated value of the supporting ballots cast. Therefore, a majority protest is not found to exist, and the proposed establishment may be authorized by council. Further, there's a, there are requests to hold Items 26 and 27 on the desk.
Okay, so let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Continue.
Items 32 through 34 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards?
Cards on all three items, sir.
Okay, then let's continue.
Items 35 through 37 are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
Let's hold those on the desk until I have a chat with Mr. Kaurian. So that brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings council to presentations or items called special.
Okay, it's been requested that we reconsider Item 11. So if we could vote on reconsideration, let's open the roll. Close the do, roll. Tabulate.
13 eyes.
Okay, we'll just hold that. Ms. Martinez?
Mr. Wesson, whenever you're ready.
Want to ask for a little help from my friends? Madam President and, and members, before we begin our work for today, we want to recognize that this is a very, very special day. In fact, it's moments like this that send me down a trip down memory lane where I have so many different emotions that it's almost impossible for me to describe the emotions that I feel. I stand before you today as the president of the Los Angeles City Council, and it blows my mind that just 50 years ago, the struggle that people that look like me had to go through just to go to school, to get a job, to vote, to, I really can't describe how, how that feels. So today is special, and I brought, or some special friends have joined us today. And I'm going to afford them the opportunity to articulate just how important this day is, why it is important that we never forget, why it's important that we recognize this. So in order to start this off, I want to ask our dear friend, somebody that everybody around this horseshoe knows, I want to ask Alice Goff, if she'd come forward and begin this presentation.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I'm joined by my brothers from SEIU. They are all sanitation workers here in the City of Los Angeles. We have community organizations, policy organizations, to try to highlight what is happening with workers, and as President said, what began 50 years ago, actually tomorrow. Tomorrow marks the 50th anniversary of the two sanitation workers. Tomorrow marks the 50th anniversary of the two sanitation workers that died on the job. On the morning of February 1st, 1968, Robert Walker and Echo Cole were crushed to death in a gruesome accident involving a faulty trash truck. Brothers Walker and Cole were sanitation workers in the city of Memphis, Tennessee. They were members of AFSMI Local 1733. These brothers were seeking shelter from the rain, shelter that was afforded their white counterparts. The death of these two workers served as the catalyst, and on February 12, 1968, members of AFSMI Local 1733 went on strike, and I have to say that it was a strike that was not even sanctioned by the International Union. They refused to continue to endure racial hostility, humiliation on the job, and they were tired of poverty wages and unsafe working conditions. But most of all, most of all, they wanted recognition of their union. By walking off the job, the sanitation workers asserted their humanity, as evidenced by their famous slogan, "I am a man." On April 3rd, 1968, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. went to Memphis for the fourth time to support and join in solidarity with the workers, because he believed that labor rights, civil rights, and human rights were all one and the same. In his last message to the workers and community, Dr. King said, "We've got to give ourselves to this struggle until the end. Nothing would be more tragic than to stop at this point in Memphis. We've got to see it through." The following day, Dr. King made the ultimate sacrifice. Here we are, 50 years later, workers are faced with the Supreme Court case of Janus versus AFSMI, ironic, versus AFSMI, that seeks to take away the freedom of working people to join together in strong unions. Unions give workers a powerful voice in speaking up for themselves, their families, and their communities. Unions provide hardworking people economic stability for their families and the tools to build a good life, possibly, possibly in the city of Los Angeles, own a home, and provide education for themselves and their children. And the beauty of it is that the collective voice of the union advocates for policies that benefit all working people. So 50 years after the strike and sacrifice, we continue the struggle for labor rights, civil rights, and human rights. Inspired by Dr. King's courage and his moral example, today's labor movement and our community allies are answering the call. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Simbora Wright. I'm a proud sanitation employee for the city of Los Angeles, but even prouder, prouder to be a union member. I'm a, I'm a union member of SEIU Local 721. We're out of sight of our mind when, when it comes to sanitation. You see the trash trucks, yes, but there's two sides of sanitation, solids, and you have the wet side, wastewater. So, we have the fifth most dangerous job in the nation, sanitation, as sanitation employees. 50 years ago, they didn't have the rights we have. Due to having a union, we have rights protection, protection to protect us, so we can go home to our families and make a honest living. As sanitation employees, we protect public health and the environment. So, I'm proud to stand here with my brothers and my sisters and say that we have come a long way, but we have a long way to go. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Brian Story, I work for the sanitation department on the solid side, I drive the trash truck. I'm in my 30th year, and trust me when I say, in 30 years, my eyes have seen a lot on this job for things that we go through for a better day. So, 50 years later, let's fast forward and I tell you that things have gotten a lot better with the working conditions, but, most of you, I hope you, you are aware that our contract is up for negotiation this year, and I want to share with you very strongly that the retirement percentage hasn't been raised in a long time. It's still at a very miserable 67% versus some other departments, and it's just time for change, and I want you guys to know that it is very high on our agenda. And when sanitation tell you what we want, we want you to pay attention to us, because we really mean it, and we hope that you will work together with us in achieving those goals, along with the other proposals that we bring to the table. So, I stand here very proudly today with my brothers behind me, wastewater and solid. It's been a long time, 50 years, and I'm a proud union member. I've been a, a union steward, I am still a union steward, for over 25 years, so I've done a lot of representation, and I know what it means to stand up for workers' rights, and I, I don't know what it would have been like without unions. We gotta have union, you guys need to believe in union and work with union. In closing, I also want to say, when you look at these brothers and sisters behind me, they are the faces of single parenting. Some of us lost our spouses along the way, and we're still here. So it means a lot. Our, our eyes have seen a lot, we've been through a lot, and it's just really time for change, and I believe in City Council. A lot of you sitting up there right now today, you've seen a lot over the years too. So just keep in mind, 50 years ago tomorrow embarks where sanitation had to stand up, strike in solidarity, and we'll do it again if we need to. So please, keep that in mind.
Good morning, my name is Littleton Gardner, I represent the North Central, North Central District of Sanitation. We have a countless amount of council districts that we run through to collect, to make the cities clean. And, I haven't been on this job long, but I understand one thing, whenever any resident calls on the City Council to get something picked up, City Council calls on sanitation, sanitation answers the call. So now we're asking you guys to recognize the necessity for the Department of Sanitation in the city. Where are the faces to you guys' names when you guys get a call from somebody saying they're in you guys' council meetings every day, and they would ask that you pick something up? Where are the faces that they see? And we say, whatever council district requested you, you made the request, we come and collect it. I was taught as a young, young man that a people without a vision will perish, and the mayor has set a vision forth to make this city one of the cleanest cities in the United States of America. It is up to us to work as a cohesive unit to make that vision come to fruition, and I just want to say thank you guys for allowing me the opportunity to stand in front of you and talk. I've never been allotted the opportunity to sit in a forum like this, and I appreciate what you guys do on a daily basis, and I hope that collectively, we can come to a resolution to make our city the best city in the United States of America.
Good evening, or good morning, everybody. My name is Robert Notough, and I am the Director of the Don't Waste L.A. Coalition. And, while I'm proud to stand here and be part of such a wonderful presentation, and to be here to carry forward and remember and commemorate a legacy of the man who I believe to be the greatest American to actually walk the face of this earth, and to stand in his legacy, which was defending the rights of sanitation workers, I'm also filled with a bit of sorrow today, that today, still to this day in 2018, 50 years later, that this is, the waste and sanitation industry is still the fifth most dangerous industry in the country in terms of fatalities, and in 2018, that's unacceptable. As Dr. King said, all work has dignity, and our sanitation workers clearly do, as they are the front line of our environmental movement when you really take a look at this. They are the workers who pick up and sort through our trash to make sure recyclables stay out of landfills and end up in the right place where they belong. But in some cases, when you walk into some, in these facilities, to this very day, there are workers who are picking through broken glass, needles, dead animals, without the basic equipment of gloves, and glasses, and helmet, and other basic safety protections. And that, again, has to stop today, that 50 years later, this is still the reality within the waste and recycling industry in the United States. Fortunately, the city of Los Angeles took a bold stand about a year ago in passing the recycle policy and program, which actually defends the rights of our local sanitation workers. Because of this policy, all private side sanitation workers are guaranteed the basic protections to make sure that they do have that basic safety equipment. They all are guaranteed a living wage and basic benefits so they can go home and provide for their families, and make sure that there's that extra loaf of bread on the table at the end of the day. And that is keeping in leg, in line with the legacy of Dr. King that he established for us 50 years after the fact, and as he said, and as I'll close, all work has dignity.
Good morning, councilmen, Mr. President, and others. I'm Pastor William D. Smart Jr., President and CEO of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference of Southern California, the organization that Dr. Martin Luther King founded. 50 years ago today, two were, as you heard, yet tomorrow, two workers were killed. Workers are still struggling, as you heard, as they were 50 years ago, but America has taken on a tenor, the same tenor of discrimination, racism, supremacy that took place 50 years. We find ourselves there again 50 years later. But we want you to know, we're going to fight, we want to fight with you to change the narrative in America where you don't have cases like Janus that's subject to change the whole labor movement, you don't have immigrants being shipped out of this country. We want to change that under the benevolence of a dream that Dr. Martin Luther King had. We're here to tell you that though he died, his dream will fight on through the works of all of us. God bless you.
So now, Madam President, I think that it is fitting that we ask the entire council to have a moment of silence, remembering the two gentlemen that lost their lives, and for people like Mr. Price and myself, we can remember actually turning on the television and seeing individual human beings walking around with a sign saying that "I am a man." So for, for that, I ask for a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you all for coming down, thank you.
Mr. Weston, I believe you have a second presentation, sir?
Yes, I do, I'm, I'm, I just have some notes that I would like to, I'd like to ask our city attorney and his team to come and join me. And if we have other city attorney staff, you can either come and sit in the front row or stand beside us. Standing is good, Mike says standing is good. Members, each and every one of us worked very, very hard to sit in our chair around this horseshoe. We grew up with a strong desire to serve the people that we live with, we, we, we have a tough job, you gotta be kind of crazy to do what we do, but we do it because we love people. And every now and then, every now and then, we have an opportunity to recognize our colleagues who do unbelievable things. Now, what I want you to think about for just two quick seconds, is imagine every state, every city, every county, every form of government, the military, nonprofit, legal organizations, imagine them all in competition to receive a few select honors by the American Bar Association. So we're talking about thousands and thousands of entities throughout this great country. The reason why you see our city attorney and his staff behind us, behind me and beside me, is because the city of Los Angeles, in August of this year, won one of the most distinguished awards that any law-related entity could win, and that was the Hotson Award. It was named after Major General Kenneth Hotson, who was a former judge, Advocate General for the U.S. Army. This award is given away for outstanding service and extraordinary work, and out of all of the cities, all of the counties, all of the states, all of the military, all of the nonprofits, the winner of this award was the city of Los Angeles and our city attorney's office. Let's give our colleagues a round of applause, because they truly deserve it. And I'm sure every one of us can, can talk about just how great of a pleasure it is to serve with Mike and, and, and Big Jim Clark, who's behind me, and, and, and the brains of the operation, Leela Kapoor, who's been my dear friend forever. But this award is bigger than just the, the, the people that are here today. This goes to every messenger, every clerk in the city attorney's office, every legal assistant, every secretary, because they all came together to put forth a work product that had to be recognized by the rest of this country. And so, I'm gonna let Mike come and, and maybe give you a little insight as to why they want it, but I wanted you guys to come so that your colleagues on the council could let you know just how proud you are, because when one of us wins, all of us win. And when the city of L.A. is recognized as a great city for whatever we do, that is a reflection on every worker in this great city. So ladies and gentlemen, it's my pleasure to present to you the leader of our attorneys, city attorney, Michael Fuer. Give him a round of applause.
Herb, that was, that was great, thank you very much. Herb, thank you so much. Mr. President, that was a really warm and kind way to introduce this award, and you said it best. Around us are representative members of an extraordinary team of nearly 1,000 people working in dozens of offices across the city of Los Angeles. And, you know, as, as you know, there is the core work of this office that so frequently happens day in, day out, with little fanfare, but it's so integral to the functioning of the city, writing every law in the city, advising the council, and the mayor, and all the city departments and agencies on every issue with a legal dimension to it, defending the city when the city is sued, prosecuting 45,000 to 50,000 cases a year. But this award recognizes not only that work, but the work of the office that has gone even beyond what the high expectations of everybody in this room have. That work includes our fighting for the people in lawsuits. That work includes our fighting for the people in lawsuits, like our case against Wells Fargo, other consumer work that we do, environmental work, like suing the gas company over the Porter Ranch Gas Leak, or Allen Co. near USC, our work to grapple with workers' rights that are not being fulfilled, whether it be port truckers at the Port of Los Angeles or home health care workers, our work to grapple with what happens to immigrants when they come into contact with notarials who frequently take their money and make their immigration status worse, our work to grapple with patient dumping of homeless patients on the streets of our city and make that something that is a relic of the past. The award recognizes our work standing up for neighborhoods. With the strong support of this council, we've nearly tripled our neighborhood prosecutor program, so effective in the city. Our neighborhood school safety program is in 83 schools in eight council districts. Our neighborhood justice program, an innovative way to restore people's lives and transform neighborhoods, working with volunteers, 365 volunteers, in nine council districts to intervene when a crime has occurred and turn the life of the offender around and improve the community at the same time, with a recidivism rate of 2% to 5%. Remarkable programs. Our neighborhood, a program that focuses on problem properties, which are grappling with gangs, or white supremacists, or guns, or human trafficking throughout the city. More than 100 cases since we've been together in the city attorney's office. So much extraordinary effort. I refer to gun violence, you know, our work is not only focused here nationally on getting guns out of the hands of domestic abusers, and making sure that guns are stored safely so kids don't bring them to school, but also has a national component to it. We were in Washington the 58th day after 58 people were murdered in Las Vegas, standing with Senator Feinstein, prosecutors, and chiefs of police from across the United States to prevent the influx of concealed weapons into jurisdictions like our city here in Los Angeles. We've spoken at the Obama White House about what local jurisdictions can do on gun violence. But of course, things at the White House have changed. The very day we received this award in New York in August, our team was on the phone from New York grappling with the next lawsuit against the Trump administration that we were contemplating. We've been involved now in 11 cases for everything from preserving DACA, to combating the Muslim travel ban, to assuring that our public safety grants aren't at risk because the administration seeks to infuse them with immigration rules that have nothing to do with public safety. Our work on homelessness, our work on risk management, Paul Krikorian has been a tremendous partner on that issue, along with the mayor. We are working as a team, and as a team with you on so many issues, from marijuana to minimum wage, grappling with how to make sure that important rules are effectuated in daily life on the streets of our city. Those partnerships are integral to the success of this office, and, Mr. President, to the future of this city. That teamwork, that collaboration is essential. I'm going to conclude with this. You know, when this award was being contemplated and organizations were involved in seeking it, you have to have three references. And the three references that we had, I think, are very telling about the impact of our office. One was from Cyrus Vance Jr., the district attorney of Manhattan, with whom we have worked so closely on national gun violence issues. Richard Cordray, who went to President Obama, headed the nation's top watchdog for consumers, the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau, and Dan Buckley, who's the judge that presides over all the judges in the largest court in the United States. Those were our references indicating that they thought we deserved, as a team, this award to call out exceptional public service by a law firm. Herb, it is terrific that you allowed us to stand with the team that earned that award today, just to share a little bit about why the work of the city attorney's office is so essential to the city, and why the teamwork between our office and the city council makes life better on the streets of our city every day. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Michael, and the city attorneys, and your posse here, we want to... Your colleagues on the city council would like to congratulate you on making the city of L.A. look good. Let's give them one more round of applause.
Thank you, Mr. Weston. Mr. Sadio, I believe you're next for your presentation, sir? Whenever you're ready, Mr. Sadio.
Yes, Madam President, thank you so much. As you know, as we all know, this is a tax season. And so many homeowners in the city of Los Angeles are unaware of the homeowner's exemption, which can reduce taxable assessed value for their principal place of residence by $7,000, and thereby produce a savings on their annual secured property tax bill each and every year until the property is sold or reassessed. So as a public service to property owners here in the city of Los Angeles, the county assessor is committed to educating the public regarding property tax exemptions and exclusions, which can produce significant savings for property owners. Today, the council joins the Los Angeles County Assessor and the Board of Supervisors in celebrating January 2018 as Homeowners Exemption Awareness Month in the city of Los Angeles. And with us to spread this exciting news, to put dollars in pockets, to make life better for all Angelenos, our own county assessor, Jeffrey Prang.
Thank you, councilmember Sadio, and good morning, President Weston and members of the council. I am here to inject a little bit of life into these proceedings in a way that only the county property tax assessor can do. Actually, I'm here bearing gifts, $9.5 million, to be precise. You know, throughout, as a council member, and I'll tell you a little bit about that in just a second, throughout January, we try to promote this very important tax savings programs for people in L.A. County called the Homeowner's Exemption. This helps anybody who owns their home and lives in a home save a little bit of money each year. If you live in your home and you own it, you qualify. You only have to fill out the form once, and then you will enjoy that benefit for the rest of your ownership of that property. Homeowner's Exemption will reduce your assessed value by $7,000 for property tax purposes, which saves the average person about $70 a year. It may not be a lot of money, but if you add it up over time, it'll buy you a new water heater, or provide you a little bit more entertainment throughout the course of the year. It's easy to apply. You can go on our website, you can call our office, you can send us an email at helpdesk@assessor.lacounty.gov. The good news is that there is $9.5 million on the table for Los Angeles County residents. There are 135,000 homeowners in L.A. City that do not apply for the homeowner's exemption, and we are hoping that you will help us share this information with your constituents. It's not often that the tax guy gets to come and tell you, "We've got money to give back." We're hoping that you will share that message with your constituents as well. We're certain that they would appreciate that opportunity. And while I'm here, I did also just want to mention briefly, we know that L.A. City was impacted, a lot of residents were impacted by the floods and the fires, the mudslides. Property tax relief is available to those who had home damage, and we are here to help them. We can lower their assessed value until that property is repaired. You can get more information at my website at assessor.lacounty.gov. Once again, Councilmember Sadio, thank you very much for helping us to spread the good word of these tax savings to our mutual constituents, and appreciate your time and attention this morning.
Yes, Madam President, the Department of Building and Safety recommends that items 1C, 1I, and 1O be continued to March 2nd.
Okay, that will be the order. Thank you. We're going to go, without objection, we're going to go into multiple cards. Mr. Walsh, are you ready? Mr. Walsh, and the items you've signed up to speak on is items 1C, 32A, 32B, items 33, 34, 1A, and 1B. Go ahead, sir.
I need an agenda. There are no agendas left in this building.
We'll have those, we'll take care of that.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
What did you say?
You have filled out cards for items 32A, 32B, 33, 34, 1A, and 1B.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or at JWalshConfidential, tweeting at HollywoodDems, and Rent Escrow Account Program. Again, I said you do a good job on this. You know, I'm one of those people, "I'm not one of those white guys who say, 'We need more white people, we need Trump, we've got to get rid of all these non-white people.'" No, no, when you do a good job, I'm the first to congratulate you. And the California Department of Transportation Planning Grant, this is... You're very good at planning. Nothing happens, but you're very good at... California Department, you know, I don't need to use every second of my time. "I'm not one of those guys who get up here and [makes noise] white man, white man, white man, white man, white man." I'm telling you right now that, as it stands, I'll go into my public comments, and let's face it...
Hold on for just a second, let's restart the clock. Your minute is up, your minute is for general public comment. Go ahead, sir.
Herb Weston, have you noticed he's getting shorter and shorter and shorter? I mean, remember, everything that Weston does is, it has nothing to do with him. He's just a punk for the mayor. You don't see the mayor around here, because he's running for, I think, President of the United States, or something very, very high-exalted. And what's going to happen? But in any case, I'm telling you right now that the tunnel, that what's going on here is that this city is out of control. Even the police chief kicks his, he leaves. He says, "Fuck it," and he leaves.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Why did the police chief leave? Why?
Mr. Clerk, do you have an announcement?
Madam President, there's been an additional request from the Department of Building and Safety to continue items 1H and 1F to March 2nd.
Without objection, that will be the order. Mr. Previn? Sir, I haven't called your name yet. Do you want to sit down? Mr. Previn? Mr. Previn, you filled out cards for items 1K, 1M, 33, 34, and general public comment. Go ahead.
Just for the record, there were some other items that evidently were not noted, but that's fine. I just think that...
These are the items that you're...
Yeah, it's fine, it's fine, it's fine. In general, I think that, that's fine. In general, I think that when we're discussing homeless shelters, storage facilities, and navigation centers, we should open those items to the public who are very interested in these matters.
And we're off-topic, Madam President.
No, no, no. Well, sir, those are in the agenda, no? Yeah, item 22, let's move forward. Item number one is the liens, which is where you like to party. These are where the city puts, leans on the properties of the residents who have had a run-in with building and safety. Many of them, frequently we hear from the public who come down, are old, dated, and Bonn came up with the, "Make sure they get it through an expensive mail system," to kind of, that's what we thought he meant by reforming it. We were going to be easing off during a homeless crisis, the attacking people for putting granny flats and other things with or without permits, sometimes without the permit, then they pay the permit. Yeah, item one, sir, the liens. Which, do you want me to specify which one I'm speaking about? Because then you could give us a minute for each of them, it's a fair public hearing. But let's move on. Item one, I think we've covered. The liens are a problem in a homeless crisis, sir, so it's not a good use of resources. Library, police officers, is a good, interesting area, but it's also not on the agenda to speak, so I won't. But you've got to be fair about Clear Channel and Lamar. These are billboard companies. Now, Bloomingfield is studying the Outfront deal. Sir, I don't get it.
And again, we're off-topic, Mr. Previn.
Okay, then let's move forward with Extra Hubbard LLC, where the CD7 is finally renting city property for her new office. That would be Rodriguez, and we appreciate that she does need a place to go. We assume that it was set up during Mr. Weston's tenure while he was pinch-hitting for her in violation of the charter. Item number eight, though, I will say, is the Catholic charities are getting a franchise. And I know Sadio and I are linked in wanting to support Catholic charities wherever we can, but here we're giving them a pipeline...
Okay, Mr. Previn, that item A, go ahead to your other items.
Is that not on that one? Okay, sir.
Mr. Previn, go ahead.
Oh, you're going to, we're bringing in the big...
No, just go ahead, Mr. Previn.
Well, which, I'm trying, but you're interrupting me. I mean, you're trying to address me, are you not?
Mr. Previn, you want to speak to an item or not?
I do, sir.
You can't speak on item A.
All right, 33 is clearly and squarely on the agenda. It's my neighborhood. We want to thank Councilmember Krikorian, who reached out to the neighbors who are clearly not going to get this, but it's a designation of cultural historical landmark. He would like to help them. Carol Terosi and Bentover Backwards to get this pushed through. Our neighborhood council supported it. In my view, unfortunately, they don't have much of a chance because the purchase of the property took place in advance. My heart goes out. It's hard to tell, there are three properties on this little street. One of them across the street is a Schindler house and is designated, and that's appropriate. These cultural historical monument designations can be used for good, and as Bloomingfield knows, for bad. We're not sure which in this case. Speaking of Bloomingfield, he's got a public auction of city property out in Mulholland, and I believe it's Avenue San Luis. This could be valuable, so get your bids in timely. And now, are we going to get one minute on general public comment?
It's his one minute for general public comment.
All right, fine. I just want to say how moved I was to see the city attorney down here. Fabel, congratulations, or in order to you as well. The Hodson Award is no small feat, and I do think it had to do with the fact that we nailed the Olympics partially, because it was, I believe it was Jim Miller, who nearly blew a snot bubble when I said, "What is the category that you're being honored for?" And I suggested, was it beating down the public? Because I think people in Los Angeles do feel that the city attorney has a lot on the plate. So whereas he is helping in some of the great Wells Fargo battles, there's a lot of whacking people out of City Hall and sending them pernicious liens and other things that are offsetting that effort. So I would just simply ask the following, because the District Attorney's Office Public Integrity Division recently directed me to the city attorney. I believe it's Mary Molitor, who's going to help us look at a post-government violation of the lobbyist ordinance at City Hall, wherein the former regional planning director was lobbying four months in, this is just a couple weeks ago, the DA threw the hands up and said, "Talk to Mike Fuer, it's a misdemeanor." So I don't know why they would do that. It feels like an abnegation, but we appreciate your...
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Now, if we could have Mr. Herman, you have items 1E through 1P, and then items 2, 3, 4, 5, 32A, and B, 33 and 34, and then your general public comment. your general public comment.
So you heard, liens are still unconstitutional. If you're here as a minority, you heard, Mr. Fuhr, I'm here to help you waive the liens, take that 300% interest off your property, so you don't have to have the emotional stress and harm added to your lawsuit against the City of Los Angeles as predators. Why are they predators? Because of all these liens, three pages of liens, starting with Jose Weezer, starting with Paul Krikorian, starting with the other assholes in our community, just fucking up your life. The quality of life now with the lien is that you should just stop the fucking liens, send a certified registered letter to the individual owner-occupant, and stop fucking with people's lives. Thank you, Donald Trump. Now, my other items, as I signed up, like 34, dealing with Mr. Bloomingfield, relative various actions relating to the California Department of Transportation, well, fuck Caltrans. Why? Look what happened up in Montecito. All that water, all that floodage, all the mudslides, because dumb asses can't clear the highways. That's a fact. We wouldn't have such destruction, infrastructure destruction like this, if stupid dumb-ass motherfuckers would get out there from Caltrans and clean up the goddamn...
Mr. President, this seems to be quite removed from the grant from Caltrans. It's something out of the agenda.
Okay, Mr. Herman, just get back on topic. Just get back on topic.
And then I go into my other item, dealing with Item 32. And what is it? Rent, Rest, Rent, Escrow. Well, you know, if you got a property that is inhabitable, and you're retarded or disabled, all you do is come here and you complain to these elected officials. Because you heard the moron city attorney this morning saying that, "Oh, yeah, we protect individuals in America." Well, you know what? When I was deported out of my rent-controlled home under Rent Escrow because it was inhabitable because of the little cockroaches and little varmints I run around called rodents, that's the same shit you have here at City Hall. Come out at 6:00 and feed the bushes, they come to life. So why would you bring Rent and Escrow accounts in here when you know you're not doing a good job? Why is that, sir? Are you dealing with my emotional, mental disability right now? I believe you are, Mr. City Attorney, because you look so fucking goddamn stupid trying to figure out what the fuck I'm saying.
Let's stay on topic. In fact, go to your general public comment, give him his one minute for general public comment.
So you heard it last night. Trump announced, "Infrastructure is a problem. Infrastructure is what you must fix." Why haven't they fixed it? Because these money-hungry, diaper-rash asshole politicians keep stuffing their fat wallets with your tax-paying dollars. Can you believe that? Do you see the streets clean? Did you see that presentation this morning? We're trying our best to clean the streets. No, fuck you. 42 U.S.C., 1983. If you're here in L.A. and you don't see the trash, there's something fucking wrong with you. Really fucking wrong. I can't live like a pig. I don't look like Herman "Jason" Wesson, and I don't have a fat, donkey ass, but I sure know how, what trash looks like. And as long as there's trash in L.A., on behalf of public interest, fuck you, white men.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, it's my understanding now, Madam Clerk, let's vote on Items 2 through 5. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Oh, I'm sorry. What was that again? I am so sorry. How many eyes?
Fifteen.
Thank you. Now, let's try Items 32 through 34. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate.
Fifteen eyes.
Thank you. It's my understanding that the substitute motion on Item 26 has been circulated, so Mr. Clerk, we can vote on that item. It's two votes, or Mr. City Attorney, did you want to chime in?
Yeah, I just wanted to note for the record, it was just correction of typographical errors, nothing substantial.
Okay, so it's just one vote then. Okay, so let's vote on that item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Mr. Sadio, are you ready for Item 27? Then the floor is yours.
Mr. President, I wanna take a moment, colleagues, to get your attention and to ask your support for a project that I think is an example of what development will be needed if we're going to address the challenges that confront this city with respect to affordability, to housing, and to homelessness. It's a very special project, and much has been written about it. It's called the Lake on Wilshire, and I'm very proud of the work of my office and the developers in putting together what's gonna be a 14-story building, 475 units of housing, 220 rooms of a new hotel. All of it will be union-built from start to finish. It will be union-operated. There will be a community center, and I'm talking about a performance center that's gonna be state-of-the-art in a district that doesn't have one as it exists. We are gonna have over 30% of affordability, even at the very low-income level, and we are going to have a series of community benefits that include $2 million to New Economics for Women, which will then use that money to preserve a 60-unit building down the street, a 60-unit building that will house 60 young mothers and their children, and it will ensure that they are not homeless. We are very proud of this project. It will be ADA-compliant. It will provide Wi-Fi throughout the area, and Wi-Fi is very important for our community. It's a low-income community, and without Wi-Fi and access, people cannot apply to, for employment, cannot apply for unemployment benefits. Young people cannot apply for scholarships or admissions to college. It's essential for this community to have access and bridge the digital divide. This is a historic project. It's one in which we are very proud of. It's one that has received broad support from labor unions, social justice groups, tenant advocates, and it's one for which I ask for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Let's prepare to vote on that item. Please, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Let's take up Item 1G. I have a card from a Mark, Mark Burton. Mark, are you here? Please come forward, sir.
Hello.
Hello, sir.
I'm here to speak on 13886 West Devon Street, I don't know, Devontry. The last time some of you people, Mr. President, took my name out of the list and I didn't get to speak, I don't think that is pretty fair. Anyway, I take care of properties when the owners are out of town, out of the state, out of the country. Some of them, they don't even live there. This is one of them. They have no idea that there's a hearing today. Neither, all these bills over $2,000. So I wanna let you know, this is a protest. Anyway, I'm handling this, and that's it.
Okay. There's a young lady that's gonna go over to this, my right, dressed in black. She's waving at you. If you'd go have a conversation with her. Okay, so we're gonna hold Item 1G. We'll vote on the remaining Item 1 items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Mr. Krikorian? Close session.
Thank you, Mr. President. Items 35 and 36 are matters that Budget and Finance has considered and recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendation. That can happen in open session unless members have questions or concerns. Item 37 is not our matter, that's a plump committee matter, so...
Okay, Madam Clerk, I mean, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, for Item 35, in the case entitled Victoria Hayvey versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $350,000 in settlement. And for Item 36, in the case entitled City of Los Angeles versus CRA LA, a California-designated local authority at all, there is a recommendation to authorize and direct the city's outside council to dismiss without prejudice the petition, excuse me, the petition for writ of mandate filed against the CRA LA, and to continue to work with CRA LA staff to secure recovery of $20 million through the Recognized Obligations Payment Schedule process.
Okay, Alan, read that again. No, let's prepare to vote on those items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
And, Mr. President, by way of clarification, for Item Number 37, there is no action necessary today.
Okay. Ms. Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, Item Number 11 pertains to some of the safety issues that we've heard in the media around our libraries, and how some of these security measures need to be improved. Some of the reports talk about the rise in drugs, and some of the incident exposure and lewd acts that are being conducted in front of our families. We need to ensure that where the caretakers of the library system in the City of Los Angeles, where a lot of our families and our children go, to learn and to fall in love with reading. I'm asking in this motion that the Los Angeles Public Library work with LAPD to find solutions to some of these safety concerns at our libraries. Like, for example, establishing no ordering zones near our library facilities, and installing panic buttons to protect our library staff. I wanna make sure also that we have a conversation about ensuring that there is funding and resources needed to restore safety in our public library system. Colleagues, I think we should do better than this. I think our children deserve a safe place to go do their homework and read, and for our communities to feel safe in our libraries. We need to do the right thing by kids, and I'm asking you to support this. I ask for an eye vote.
Thank you. Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to rise and really thank Ms. Martinez for her leadership on this very important issue. As someone who grew up in the public library system and always felt safe and secure, and that I was in a protected environment as a child in the public libraries that I attended, this couldn't be more important or more timely. And as Chair of the Arts, Entertainment, Parks, River Committee, we are seeing this process through as the new protocols are established to address exactly the concerns outlined in this motion. We need to be there for our families across the entire city, no matter what neighborhood these libraries are in. There is nothing more important than protecting our youth and families in the institution of learning that is accessible to everyone. So I just want to rise in complete solidarity with Ms. Martinez and the rest of our colleagues here, so that we can make sure that our libraries are beacons of safety, hope, inspiration, and learning as we evolve into the future in an enlightened City of Los Angeles. And I want to thank the library system, Los Angeles Police Department for working in conjunction to establish these protocols, so this horrific activity that was covered in the media can come to a prompt end for all of us. Thank you.
Mr. Englander?
Oh, thank you very much. And I support the idea of putting panic buttons in libraries to make our librarians and our libraries safer, although I wish I could stand and say I'm excited about this moment because we're taking a step forward to make them more safe, but I'm not. This is actually a sad state of affairs. Growing up here, we used to go to libraries growing up, taking my kids there, and they've always been a safe place. We never had those issues. The fact that we have to make a move now to do something to make sure they're made safe where they once were, I think it's a sad state of affairs. And I think it speaks volumes as to the fact that we have to take these measures. We shouldn't have to, but we do, and they have to be made safe. But I just want to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ru.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to rise and thank my co-presenter, Nury Martinez, for stepping up on these issues. And, you know, when we first saw the NBC investigative investigation that they did, we were all floored and shocked. But I am very pleased with the response from Chief Beck and LAPD, who was responsive immediately and has took effective action to start protecting our libraries and our children. But going forward, we will be working closely with our staff, the librarians, LAPD, as well as the community, to make sure that we have additional safeguards for libraries, so that things like that was presented in the NBC investigative piece doesn't happen again. But I thank Councilwoman Martinez for standing with me, and Chairman O'Farrell for moving this along, and the rest of my colleagues in the city council for their support. Thank you.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on the item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Okay, you know what? Let's take some general public comment. Margarita Lopez, Enrique Velazquez, and Claudia Medina, please come forward. Jose Felix Cabrera, please come forward. Mr. Herman, please.
Buenos dias.
Good morning.
To todos ustedes concejales.
All of you council members.
Es una tristeza que haya pasado primero el concejal a decir el artículo 27.
Sadness that I have to come up here and talk about Article, Item 27?
No nos haya dado oportunidad de expresar nuestras preocupaciones de la comunidad.
We haven't given the opportunity to express ourselves in the community?
Nuestra preocupación es porque este proyecto está ofreciendo solamente 49 unidades de bajos recursos entre comillas para personas que ganan 40,000 dólares al año, de cuatro familias, lo que nuestra área, nuestra comunidad no gana, esa cantidad gana de 6,000 dólares al año, y este proyecto no ha sido equitativo, y le pido al concejal que debe de salir a la comunidad, de saborear las necesidades de nuestra comunidad, de tentar lo que está sufriendo nuestra comunidad, y que sea equitativo así como nos pidió su voto, queremos que responda la comunidad.
We want him to respond to our community.
Thank you. Next.
Oh, sí, muy buenos dias, señores concejales. Very good morning, Mr. Councilmembers. Mi nombre es Jose Felix Cabrera. My name is Jose Felix Cabrera. Soy miembro de la comunidad Westlake MacArthur Park. I'm a member of the community Westlake MacArthur Park. Y sí, es una molestia que está aquí la comunidad. And it's a shame that the community is here. Esperando una respuesta, no se nos dio la oportunidad para expresar o hacer nuestros problemas de nuestra comunidad. We haven't been given the opportunity to express our problems in the community. Estoy opuesto a este proyecto. I'm against this project. En la forma que se diseñó. In the form that it was explained. Ya que no, no se hizo un reporte del ambiente. Since there was no report about the environment. Del impacto ambiental. The environmental impact. Entonces, por favor, tomen en cuenta esto, que esto va a originar a muchos desplazamientos de los pequeños negocios y de las personas, o sea, pobres que vienen a la comunidad. And the poor people that live in the community. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker. We have Claudia Medina, Fabiola Pablo. Mickey Jackson, Robert Nina, Nina? Mickey Jackson, Robert Neenah, Neenah, yes.
Yes, hi, good morning. My name is Claudia Medina. I'm a tenant advocate. We came with a couple of community members to voice our opposition to item twenty-eight. We didn't get to speak even though a council member expresses full support for the project and stated that tenant advocates were in support of the project while tenant advocates are not. And something I want to bring to light is that approving these massive luxury developments in low-income neighborhoods is causing indirect displacement. And you all are responsible for approving these massive projects, and the focus is on approving these massive luxury projects that cause or exacerbate gentrification in low-income neighborhoods, and not enough focus is being made on how do we help those low-income tenants that are going to be displaced because of these projects? And again, just expressing and clarifying, no, tenant advocates are opposing this project. So it is not correct that tenant advocates are in support. Tenant advocates are here today expressing their opposition.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Fabiola Pablo. I'm a tenant advocate at Inquilinos Unidos, and we just want to express our concerns for the reference project. We are against on how the project is presented, and there's no environmental impact report, and therefore, based on the year the property was built, we are not aware of how this would affect our tenants. In addition to that, there would be a direct displacement where a lot of low-income tenants will be difficult to find housing and will be adding to more of the population percentage of homelessness in the community. So, yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Jill Stewart, Jorge Castaneda, Nieslin Cruz.
I adopt the previous comments made about the project. The UN Monitor said, "I think it's on a scale I hadn't anticipated," block after block of people talking about homelessness in Los Angeles. If an earthquake left sixty thousand homeless overnight, we wouldn't let them sleep on the streets. We have a disaster plan. This is an unnatural disaster. Use that plan today. The HHH cost per unit is a disastrous four hundred and thirty thousand dollars per unit, and they won't even open for two years. We have to do it differently. Healthy Housing Foundation is housing people now for as little as thirty-six thousand dollars a unit. L.A. can't afford to pay more than twenty-six thousand dollars per unit. Parker Center is empty. Sunset Gordon is vacant. We need to do it differently. We need to get this housing open now, and we will show you how.
Ms. Stewart. Ms. Stewart, please come forward. Mr. Herman, last warning. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Jill Stewart. I'm the Executive Director of Coalition to Preserve L.A., a nonprofit. We're fighting for homeless housing, and we are not in favor of the way the Los Angeles City Council, and with all due respect to Rich Llewellyn, how the C.A.O. of the City of Los Angeles and the mayor are proceeding with the one point two billion dollars that we taxpayers gave you more than a year ago. It's going to take two years for the city at its slow-paced rate to open one unit of homeless housing. It is going to cost an average of four hundred and thirty thousand dollars per unit. This is insane. You are not going to fix homelessness. Imagine if you were handling Katrina. You would be the worst FEMA ever to exist on the face of the earth. You must come up with better ideas. Stop ignoring the HHH Citizen Advisory Commission. They have unique ideas, they have quick solutions. You're screwing up. Please fix it.
Thank you. Susan Hunter, Julia Garcia, sir, come up. Sir, are you in line?
My name is Jorge Castaneda.
Yes, come on to the mic.
My name is Jorge Castaneda. I'm with the Healthy Housing Foundation and the Coalition to Preserve L.A., Projects of AHF. Housing is a human right. It is not acceptable that L.A. is the number-three capital of homelessness in the world. We are the number-one city in this country where homelessness, where the homeless live on the streets. That's forty-two thousand people. Seventy-five percent of L.A.'s homeless. New York City, one, number-one in total homelessness in this country, only has four percent. That's three thousand people living on the streets. This is because New York City has a right-to-shelter law. L.A. must pass a right-to-shelter law. L.A. must provide shelter to every single human being in L.A. Right now, we see them behind these walls. We must declare a state of emergency today and act like it is an emergency, because it is an emergency. Housing is a human right.
Thank you. Thank you. So, next speaker, and I'm also looking for Mari Salasorto. Your name, identify yourself.
My name is Susan Hunter. Can I get six more seconds added to my clock, please?
We will give you your one minute, yes.
Thank you. My name is Susan Hunter. I'm with CPLA as well as LATU, and I'm here today. First off, I challenge the vote on item number twenty-seven in regards to procedure, and I also adopt all prior comments to mine in the same finding. Number two, it is clear that the intent of the city is to house tourists and not our own. It is a shame and a scam that you seem to think that our tax dollars are monopoly money for you to burn through in lawsuit after lawsuit after lawsuit because you will not do right by the people of this city. We don't have thirty thousand tourists sleeping on the streets who can't find a place to stay. We have our own sleeping on the streets who are relying on you to finally do the right thing by us, and yet you continue every single day to not do that. We have not seen one one-hundred-percent building of entirely affordable units built since we have passed H or HHH. And whose fault is that? Because it's not the fault of the people sleeping on the streets.
Good morning.
Yo soy Julia Garcia.
I'm Julia Garcia.
Y soy el rostro de la miseria por el desamparo.
And I am the face of the misery for displacement.
El señor Cedillo hace un momento decía...
Mr. Cedillo has said a moment ago that housing for the community that I belong But in that moment, what I was worried about is to think of what's going to happen with organizations, the nonprofit organizations that are on the building of Westlake and Wilshire. These organizations are our only legal recourse that we have to be able to ask for help. I'm interested in knowing if they're going to continue in the same building with the same rent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eilena Wachtel, Teresa Alta Moreno, yes, ma'am.
Buenos dias.
Good morning.
Estoy acá.
I'm here.
Porque soy una de las personas desalojadas.
I'm one of the displaced people.
Estoy preocupada.
I'm worried.
Porque estos apartamentos no son para nosotros, los pobres.
Because these apartments are not for us, the poor.
Y de verdad estoy bien desesperada porque la renta van a subir.
And I'm very worried because the rents are going to go up.
Y a nosotros, los pobres, no los toman en cuenta.
And us, as poor people, aren't being taken in consideration.
La verdad sí, les pido de favor que hagan algo por nosotros.
The truth, I'm asking as a favor if you can do something for us.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hi, good morning. Ilana Wachtel with the Coalition to Preserve L.A. I am extremely concerned about this homeless situation. L.A. calls itself an aggressive city. We're fighting for DACA. We're fighting for Dreamers. We're fighting for climate change, yet we leave thousands, thirty thousand people on our streets, and nothing has happened. It's been over one year since HHH has passed.
Mr. Herman, sit down. Hold her time. Just sit down. Yes, ma'am. So sorry.
Okay, sorry. And this, nothing, no, not one unit has been presented since the passage of HHH. And in the meantime, during 2017, over eighteen hundred units have been destroyed, Ellis Act units have been destroyed. And those people, where are they going? The units that are available are not affordable to low-income citizens. This is hypocritical. This is really, really, really disgusting, as my colleagues have said. It's a disaster.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. Mr. Herman, this is the last time I'm going to call your name. Do it again, we're going to ask you to leave.
Buenos dias, señor.
Buenos dias.
Mi nombre es Teresa Altamirano.
My name is Teresa Altamirano.
Yo le pido al señor Cedillo que nos tome en cuenta...
I'm asking Mr. Cedillo to keep us in mind.
Para que también nos apoye con apartamentos de bajo recurso.
So that he can support us with low-income apartments.
Porque esos apartamentos que él está diciendo, nosotros no podemos darnos lujo y vivir porque no tenemos ese dinero para pagarlos.
Because the apartments that he's claiming to build, we don't have the luxury of being able to afford those. Those are apartments with high prices, and we aren't able to pay. So I would like to ask if he could support us, the renters, and for the people with low income.
Así como él pide apoyo de...
Just like he's asking for us to vote for him, we are also asking for his support.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other folk who signed up for public comment? Would you please come up and line up behind? Now, you've already spoken. Now, Ms., you've already spoken. These are people who did not speak.
Thank you very much, council member. My name is Luis Cabrales. I am Executive Director at Inquilinos Unidos. Inquilinos Unidos is located on 1930 Wilshire Boulevard. This is the building, the office building, that will be turned into an upscale hotel. Each year, Inquilinos Unidos receives forty-four hundred tenants from the city of Los Angeles who face unjust evictions and illegal rent hikes. We also help them with repairs to their housing. A lot of them are referred by your offices. Seventy-five percent of them, Councilmember Martinez, are single mothers. I am really disappointed at your vote today, and in fact, I challenge your vote on item number twenty-seven. I find violation of the Roberts Rules of Order of Full Public Forum. You only heard one side, one side. You did not give us the opportunity. All of these residents were here to speak about this issue.
Thank you.
Had you heard their...
Thank you, thank you, sir. And the public comment was already satisfied in committee, so that's why. So the next speaker, please identify yourself.
Enrique Velazquez, I'm also a tenant advocate. For years, and I've been working in this community, and I've been trying to open a dialogue between the council of the area and the community, and really, we were shut down from the beginning. There was this kind of fake dialogue going on when in reality, everything was dealt under the table. Please understand, you're changing the fabric of this community. Don't take it easy. You're changing, you're evicting people that for years have been living in the area. This project, these units are not going to be affordable for the community. The homelessness is, problem is going to increase. Immigrant people is going to be evicted from the area, not directly, but just the side effects of this community. In the last year, in the last year and a half, twelve thousand units of luxury housing have been approved and processed by this council, and none of them have been affordable or will be affordable to the community.
Thank you. Identify yourself.
My name is Robert Neenah, and for the last twenty-six years, I've been a waste consultant. This is under general comments. I've negotiated contracts in every single city in the United States, any place that has a Taco Bell, a Pizza Hut, a Starbucks Coffee in the United States and Canada. The contract that you have entered into with these franchise, seven franchise haulers, is the worst contract I have ever seen in my life. I understand you're getting thirty-five million dollars, but at the end of the day, it's on the backs of every single business in these cities. Did you, you can go twenty-five miles out of cities, out of Los Angeles, and visit. Every one of these haulers has a franchise city. None of these fees exist in those cities. Every single businessperson I've spoken to believes that all of you are on the take. Given the opportunity, and a show of hands, if given an opportunity for a free polygraph test, which of you would be willing to say that you have not taken a cent from the Teamsters or any of these garbage companies? I would like a show of hands. Any of you willing to?
Thank you, sir. Your time. The next speaker, please. Thank you. Then, sir, your time has expired. Thank you. Please come, identify yourself.
Yes, my name is Nieslin Cruz, and I'm the owner of 23948 Jensen Drive, West Hills, California. And I was here to protest a lien that was, a potential lien that was put on my property that I believe is being put on my property improperly. I never had the opportunity to have a city attorney hearing. I was denied a city attorney hearing, and I think any property owner who is a tax-paying citizen and a tax-paying owner of a property should not ever be denied the opportunity to have a city attorney hearing in order to resolve a building and safety issue. This is a common problem with building and safety. A lot of times, they go into these properties without no search warrants, without the consent of the property owner, and because of the fact that you exercise your right to nullify these people into your property, you are criminally charged. I was criminally charged with four misdemeanors, and all because of the fact that I decided to exercise my constitutional rights to stop building and safety from their abuse. So I am the victim of a selective prosecution.
It's my understanding that your item's been continued for thirty days.
Correct.
So if you just chat with the council office, hopefully, we can come to some resolution.
Mr. President, there's been a request to continue item one G to March second. Again, one G to March second.
Without objection. That brings us where?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, they're posted, they're referred, but before we go into announcements and adjourn ee motions, I'd like to recognize Mr. Buscayeno.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, an incident occurred in San Pedro yesterday afternoon that was appalling, and I believe that we should all take a moment to witness this video that appeared on our social media networks where L.A. County Sheriff deputies dropped off a clear 5150 patient in San Pedro at the border of the San Pedro-Rancho Palis Verdes. And I wanted to introduce a motion that I know I can't speak on, it's going to go through its process, to demand an investigation from the Sheriff's Department. But just take a look here, and I just hope and pray that none of our districts have to experience this in a time where mental illness is at the forefront of our quality of life issues here. And I know today, we submitted a motion in looking at how we define gravely disabled in the 5150 WIC in partnership with the L.A. County. But just know that this was appalling, disturbing, and disgusting, and this individual was taken into LAPD custody two blocks down after a call for service was generated by a San Pedro resident. Not only LAPD, but also L.A. Fire had to respond to this gravely disabled individual who obviously was not being looked out for. Thank you, Mr. President, for this opportunity.
Mr. Cedillo.
Yeah, I just thank my colleague for bringing that to our attention. Mr. President, that is repugnant, abhorrent. We have a challenge in housing the homeless community, and we still have people patient dumping. This is just unacceptable, and I thank my colleague for bringing this to our attention. I wrote legislation over a decade ago to stop this when I was in the legislature, and I just think that it's something that we have to all collectively agree that we should not accept. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Announcements, members, announcements? If we could, no announcements, if we could all rise for adjournments? If we could, no announcements, if we could all rise for adjourned motions? If we could all rise for adjourned motions? I'm looking to my right side, which is Mr. Caretz and Mr. Rue's side. I don't see any. I'm looking to my left, Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'd like to ask today that we adjourn in memory of former Los Angeles County assessor Kenneth P. Han. Mr. Han, who was actually no relation to Janus and the other Kenneth Han, served the people of Los Angeles County with distinction for 10 years, from 1990 to 2000, earning a reputation for fairly and honestly managing the property assessment process. He was born in 1939 in Ohio, graduated from Kent State University, and moved to California in the 60s. He was elected in November 1990, following a 10-year career as an appraiser specialist with the Office of the Assessor. And he defeated one-term incumbent John Lynch in that election, benefiting in part from the name Han. He was re-elected in 94, 1998. And during his tenure, he was involved in the resolution of a major tax law case involving Prop 13, and the US Supreme Court ultimately upheld the measure. He was a private guy, and so he kept his sexual orientation rather quiet. But he was later in life, out, and proudly so, as a member of the LGBTQ community. In fact, he was at that time, having been elected countywide, probably the LGBT elected official in the country with the largest constituency, as Jeff Prang is today, as a matter of fact. After his retirement, he moved to Hawaii for several years, and he farmed a fruit ranch. He later spent time in Washington State before settling into his final home in Cathedral City. He survived by his husband of more than 43 years, Louis Mangual. They were legally married in March of 2013. No services have been planned, but Kenny's husband is asking that donations in his memory be made to the Los Angeles County Animal Care Foundation and the Los Angeles LGBT Center. May he rest in peace.
Mr. Angler.
Yeah, I just want to add to that. I didn't realize he had passed away. He was a very dear friend. I had the honor of actually working for him, working on his campaign, a couple campaigns for him. And in fact, I remember once, we, we had done a poll and decided that we weren't, we didn't even put his first name on the ballot statement. And, but he was a very sweet man. He ran the office with integrity, and he was just a very good person. I got to know a lot of his staff over the years, including Gary Townsend, which I'm sure many of you know as well. And he will be missed. May he rest in peace. Thank you.
Mr. Caretz.
Thank you, Mr. President. He was a friend as well, and I think I may have been the first elected official that he met with and asked for an endorsement. And we had a very interesting conversation. He said, "Well, some of my colleagues and I are running as a protest, and we're hoping if we all run, you know, maybe we force a runoff and, and get the incumbent's notice." And I said, "No, you have to realize, you're the next assessor. You're Kenny Han." And he was arguing with me, "No, he was just doing this as, as a protest and trying to contribute to the effort." And I tried to explain to him that he couldn't lose the office no matter what he did. And I, I think I convinced him by the end, and certainly, the voters did also. And with some irony, the Han family didn't support him. They supported the other side. But they were completely unable to get that message out, and nobody believed that he wasn't Kenny Han or a close relative, and, and he could never lose. And he was a great guy and well-qualified, and I think he may have come to me also early on because I was obviously an LGBT-friendly and supportive elected official, and was proud of the great job that, that he did as assessor. Oh, yeah, and yes, I did endorse him, of course.
Mr., was it Mr. Sedillo?
Mr. President, Ramona Costa Banuelos. One of the early Dreamers that we talk about today was the 34th Treasurer of the United States. She was appointed by President Richard Nixon on September 20th, 1971, and she served till December 17th, from then till February 14th, 1974. She was extraordinary. She came north, and she was making food for workers, and then began a food products company called Ramona's. You've probably seen them in the supermarkets. They're headquartered in Gardena, California, and they produce 22 different food products and have 500 employees. She was extraordinary. They once sent a meeting in the White House, somebody was trying to calculate something, and she just gave them the answer, and they were amazed because she didn't really speak up much in the meetings of the cabinet. And they asked her how she knew that, and she said, "I was educated in Mexico, so obviously I know math very well." The big personal thing about her, two things. One, you know, there's, as still exists the case, a lack of access to financial institutions on the East Side, so her and many friends put their money together and created the Pan American Bank. And that became a very big thing for economic development on the East Side in the 60s, and actually afforded us, my family, an ability to get a loan and to buy the home that was the first home my father purchased for us in Bora Heights. Later on, she stepped back from running the bank, but was very involved in supporting the Dreamers, and raised money for the Dreamers. And then there were two prominent Dreamers who came out of UCLA and then tragically died on the East Coast in a auto accident, and she was one of the supporters of them. And her, she passed the company to her daughter, and continued to be involved in the surrounding community of Bora Heights in East Los Angeles. And so it's with great sadness that she died on September, or January 15th, surrounded by her family. She was 92 years old, passing from dementia. And then, of course, I'm surprised we hadn't heard on this floor yet, I'd like to close in memory of Hugh Rampolo Masekila. He was a South African trumpeter, flugelhornist, cornet, composer, singer. Wrote something called "Grazing in the Grass," all other songs, "Sowito Blues," "Bring Him Back Home." Number-one pop hit in 1968, "Grazing in the Grass." And he was very active in the movements.
Grazing in the grass is a gas, can you dig it?
There you go. That's the lyrics. His was all instrumental. And he, he was involved in the anti-apartheid efforts, and had something called the Lunchbox Fund, a nonprofit organization that provides daily meals for students in Johann, in Sowito, in South Africa. He died in Johannesburg on the 23rd of January from prostate cancer, 78 years old.
He was a phenomenal entertainer.
Yes, he was.
Mr. Rue.
Could I, could I join Mr. Sedillo in the first adjournment for the Ramona family? Her daughter does live in my district, and I had a fortunate opportunity to meet their family, and I just wanted to join. Thank you.
Okay, are there any more? Then I'll, I'll end with, I'll end with this one. Members, I rise to adjourn in the memory of a young man that was born in 1929. His name was Bertram Fulman. I never, ever had the opportunity to meet him, but I am, his son is one of my best friends. And his son is an individual that I'm sure many of you may know. His name is Dr. Howard Fulman. He is the medical director for several Kaiser facilities in the Southern region. And a better man you will never meet than Dr. Howard Fulman. And he attributes that to the teachings from his dad, Bert. Bert's family came, they were Hungarian Jews, and they lived in Brooklyn, lower-middle class, and he worked in the clothing industry. Howard was always in, well, it was funny, when he was like six and seven and eight year old, eight, he would be embarrassed to tell people what his dad did. But he told me, once he became 15, 16, and 17, it was cool, because his dad was a bra salesman, okay? And when he would, they would be in class, and then it was at a time when you would bring in your, you know, what does your dad do? And your dad would come in. And Howard said, when he was seven and eight, he would just squeal, and everybody would make fun of him. But when he got 15, everybody was like, "Ooh," you know? So, Bertram, they called him Bert, loved his family, and they were just a big loving family. He had Howard and then a daughter named Donna. They were, were diehard left Mr. Caretz, that you might be related. They were left-wing, left-wing Democrats. And at one point, this Bert's sister received a Rose Garden Award. But she wasn't gonna go because of who was in the White House at the time. So the family had to make her go, so that lets you know how left-wing they were. He was married to a young lady named Ricky for 65 years. His business merged with a West Coast business, so he moved the family to Los Angeles. And that's where Howard was raised. And that's where Howard said, his, his dad's motto to the, him and his sister was, "Work hard, make a difference, do something good." And so his father was so unbelievably proud that one of the most challenging projects that we've had in the South Side of town was the development of the new Kaiser Permanente that is in my district, and it abuts Mr. Harris Dawson's district. This project was so hard, it took three councilmen. It took Mark Ridley Thomas, and after that, it took Bernard Parks. And I was proud to run the anchor leg to get that facility built. But if it wasn't for Kaiser, and if it wasn't for Howard Fulman refusing to pull out and to go somewhere else, then that Kaiser, that phenomenal Kaiser, would not be there today. He said his dad was a jokester. He was in World War II. He was in the Navy, and he was on a destroyer. On a trip in Italy, he bought some really gaudy-looking ring for like two or three dollars. But I mean, it was just... So the dad would tell everybody that he saved some Muslim con from being sucked into the propeller of an airplane on, on the airport of Morocco, and he gave him this ring. And Howard Fulman says, to this day, there's still probably 100 people alive that remember that story. Also, he said that the dad would go out, and there was a buddy of his that really wanted to buy this blueberry pie, but that his dad convinced the waitress that his friend had such severe diabetes that if he tasted it, that he would literally fall out in the restaurant, and the waitress refused to sell his friend that pie. But Bertram was the kind of guy that came up, came from the type of family that believed that all people should be judged equally. I don't know what it is about certain people, but he was one of those special folk. He was the kind of guy, when he came to work, he knew the names of every employee's wife and child and birthday, when they had to box up, because he, his business kind of grew, and he, he went from bras to handbags as well. And he would go in and literally, side by side with the people in the factory, build these handbags. So I am personally so grateful to Bertram, because he and, and his wife Ricky helped give me one of the greatest friends that I've ever had as an adult. A man that is from one phone call away from helping anybody that's here. So Howard, I want to adjourn in the memory of your dad, Bertram. May he rest in peace. Members, this council is adjourned.